Third, twenty twenty four, Eastside Board of Ed regular meeting to order. For those of you who stand, who stand in public meetings.
The United States of America and to the Republic where we just stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That opens up for public comment. Ready to say nothing? Okay. Give your name and address.
My name is Sean Carlo D'Angelo. I live on sixty five Arbor Crossing in Eastland, Connecticut. So I was here a few months ago, I think it was about six months ago, and we had a pretty lively discussion about middle school sports, which were great. It's worked out really well. Um, but it's come to my attention, I may be wrong. Um, there's only in the spring, I know you guys, you guys wanted to engage some spring sports. There seems like there's only going to be girl's sports in the spring, no boy's sport in the spring, so. I wasn't sure if you guys were aware of that, and I wanted to kind of bring it to the board of tension. Doesn't seem quite right. And that's, you know, there's a potential for baseball or track and field or whatever, something for the boys to do, some sort of activity. I would hope that the board would consider maybe, I think, something, there's still plenty of time, I think, to do something for the spring, so.
Yeah.
Probably the, the best group of middle school boy baseball players in the state of Connecticut, arguably New England. I mean, we've been the state championship three years in a row. It'd be a shame, it'd be nice if I was something together, but I know sometimes if you want to try to include more people, so maybe track and field or something. Yeah. Because right now I'm just being told it's girls volleyball. Seems odd.
That's, that's really appreciated and will. We'll talk during later and find out more. I don't know if we are aware.
Yeah, we've got that of a gift.
Yeah, I figured you probably weren't, because I know you guys were pretty supportive of some spring activities. Yeah. I, I know there's busting in, there's a lot of things, but it just seems like we could probably do something. Title nine two, I don't, you know, I know it does apply to Connecticut, it's not just college, so there's, it goes both ways.
Yeah.
Well, thanks so much, appreciate it.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Their public comment? Other people comment? Last call for public comment. Hearing none, public comment closes. Next order of business, we have approval minutes. Have first order is the minutes from the September ninth, twenty twenty four Board of Ed regular meeting. Any comments or changes? Of your motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of.
Number nine?
September ninth, twenty twenty four, Eastside Board of Education.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those saying? Minutes passed unanimously. Next, we have the minutes from the September ninth Board of Ed. Committee of the whole meeting. Comments? Your motion?
Okay, can I make a motion to approve the September ninth, twenty twenty four? Board of Education Committee of the whole meeting. Okay.
The further comment? All those in favor, say aye. Oposed, staying. Minutes passed. Then we have thirty seven minutes, but we don't normally have these, so my recommendation is we skip. So we don't normally approve our subcommittee minutes as part of our board minutes, so. I'm gonna just recommend we skip over. If one's okay with that, okay.
Yeah, I thought it snuck out.
No, that's okay, it's not a big deal. Okay, moving on. So for our first special recognition of the year, it's great that we have an Eastline High School student, and I'll pass it to Jeff.
Yeah, I'm gonna let, Deb has an introduction that she wants to do for Paloma, and we're excited to be recognizing her for a lot of hard work. And if it's gone into set design and our drama club, so, yeah, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay, this is Paloma. It's my great pleasure to recognize current senior Paloma Sosquez for her work with our drama program. Paloma is an accomplished artist. If you attended the art expo or have been to any of the recent drama productions, you've seen her work. Paloma has worked behind the scenes in the drama program since her freshman year. She took over as stage manager last year, where she not only assisted the directors to organize the various crews and teams that make up a show. She also designed the set, T-shirts, and the programs. Her work resulted in her being nominated for several Halos. The Halos are the High School State Drama Awards. She was nominated for Best Scenic Design for the Laramie Project and Putnam County Spelling Bay. Best Props Design and Running Crew for the Laramie Project. Best Stage Management and Original Cover Design or Artwork for Putnam County Spelling Bay. And she was also nominated for Sondheim, which are awards given to musicals, for set design. But the award she took home in the spring was the Halos Above and Beyond Award, which perfectly sums up her dedication to the program and was so well deserved. As the musical director Becky McCoy said, "We could not do the show without her. She is truly a leader of the production, and everyone both respects and adores her." Sarah Kelly, the fall play director, said that Paloma's creative mind turns the ordinary into the extraordinary. And we are so fortunate to be the beneficiaries of her talents. She is truly the heart and soul of the drama club. Paloma is currently the stage manager for the upcoming production of. Which goes up in November. Her three D model of the set is incredible, and she is working with Nate Brailing, our woodworking teacher, to make that come to life. Um, she's hoping to attend school in London next year, where she plans to study, surprise here, technical theater. Introduce here.
Um, these are my parents and my brother. Um, my boyfriend Patrick and his mom, and Sarah Kelly's here also too.
Little cheer. Paloma, congratulations. Thanks for joining us tonight and.
So, or, I'm gonna take a picture with.
And they're gonna take.
Oh, she's got it.
Congratulations.
I thought I had.
Or London, did you say?
London, England, yeah.
Where are you going?
Uh, Rose Brewford is my top choice right now.
I'm gonna picture. All right, Patrick, you ready?
Have to get used to that.
Congrats again.
Thanks, that is phenomenal, and you started to do more of these recognitions, started last year doing more of these, and it's just so great to see what our students are able doing at all levels at elementary, middle, and high school, and it's pretty amazing. You reflect back and think of myself in high school, and we'd be unable to do anything. And it's, it's pretty amazing, so congratulations, and we really appreciate all that you've done. You are more than welcome to stay. You're also more than welcome. You have to stay unless it's all, it's up to you, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have special reports from our high school student representatives. We have Jalen and Xavier as new to our.
Um, so so far, Pearl has hosted Parent Night. And that was basically just the parents of all the students coming in. It was majority freshman parents. And they got to tour the school, and the counselors filled them in on some things. They got to meet their teachers and they talked with them for about twenty minutes or so and just went over the book reports and sales and getting to know your sons or daughters, teachers more. Um, some upcoming events are Pitcher Day, which is tomorrow and during the English classes. Um, Thursday's gonna be a half day. Monday, October fourteenth is no school. Tuesday, the fifteenth of October is PSAT days for juniors. And then after they take the PSAT, the rest of the school is gonna come in and have a half day. Um, October twenty first to the twenty sixth is Spirit Week. And the Senate has decided on a cause and the theme for commons decorating. So the cause is gonna be Blue Door, which is an organization that helps people who can't really afford like medical supplies, so like wheelchairs or crutches. And they give those to the people who can't afford them. And then for commons decorating, we decided on movie franchises. So the seniors have Harry Potter, juniors have Star Wars, sophomores have Marvel, and the freshmen have Pirates of the Caribbean. Um, College Fair Field Trip is in New Haven this Thursday off from eight to eleven. Seniors are starting painting their parking spots.
Saw that today.
That's going on, or that happened yesterday, it's going on today, four to seven, and tomorrow four to seven as well. Um, and those parking spots were drawn at the senior picnic, which was a success. Um, a lot of people like brought games and we took some stuff from the PE department and it was a good time. Um, career concentration applications are going on right now. And I think they've added two more. One is like an allied health. And then another one has to do with like languages, like Spanish and French. Um, senior pictures for the yearbook and the bios are due November first. Um, and a lot of people are already, they've already gotten their senior pictures in, they just have to put them in. Um, the swim team is hosting a Shop for Cause fundraiser with Pearls and Plaid and Iannic in Old Saybrook. And twenty percent of the proceeds are gonna go to the swim team. Counselors hosted Application Night on the nineteenth, and that was mostly for parents who aren't really sure about the college application process, or it's their first time, or if they want it reiterated, if they already have like an older sibling that went, then that was what that was for. And then also the counselors recently came into English classes and set up the kids with Common App and other devices to help them with the common, with the college applications. And with that, right now, a lot of seniors are a little stressed out because, um, like college apps are just like one more thing we have to do on top of like sports, work, and school in general. So, yeah. Got it.
And well, a comment, uh, Blue Door, my husband tore his Achilles about eight weeks ago, and it's not for people necessarily who can't afford it, it's just that you're recycling things that you're only going to need for a short period of time, so we had a walker and some crutches and all this paraphernalia, and now that he is back mobile again, that has been put back into the Blue Doors and they sanitize it and then they put it out to the public, so it's a really phenomenal service, otherwise we'd all have this equipment that just ends up in a landfill, so it's a really nice thing. And I'm wondering about any Haitian population that we might have that's being impacted by some of the, uh, talk that's going around.
Sorry, what?
Do we have any Haitian population in our high school that is being impacted by some of the rhetoric that's going around in the country right now?
Um. I am not aware of any like Haitians in the school.
Okay, that's fair.
Thank you, there could be some, I'm, I just don't, I don't know.
Yeah, we're not, not hearing of anything specifically, but you could always ask Mrs. Kelly to.
Yeah, it's good to know. I have a friend who is one of the directors, or she's involved with the fundraiser for the Haitian Healthcare Foundation, and they've just definitely been impacted. Just wanted to protect, you know. Thank you so much.
Question? I know, you mentioned College Fair in Nippon. Previously, I think had College Fair here every year, are we? And this might be for Deb, are we not doing College Fair anymore?
This is the second year we're not doing the College Fair. Um, due to a decrease in college reps and an increase of students coming from other schools. And a very busy night, so instead, we've put funds toward taking a bus to the New England Association of College Admissions. One of the bigger college fairs in the region. And then, so in the fall, they're taking the seniors there, and then in the spring, they take the juniors to a spring fair.
Presumably, there's probably more schools than we would get.
More actual admissions people, alumni.
Yeah.
What about the parents? What about the parents? I mean, I, I'm assuming they meet their children, their students there.
I mean, they're welcome to meet their students there. Most of these fairs happen both during the day and at night, so sometimes parents go back with them at night. Um, but they're there with their school counselors, who are the, the people who are helping them with the application process here at school, so it, it, I think it's been so, so far, pretty successful.
So no parents have spoken out, being concerned about being able to attend, no?
I would think a lot of parents came with, I mean, I know I never.
I did.
I always did.
Some things I don't.
No, that's true.
It was, it was a mix.
I follow this, there are a bunch of good schools on there.
Yeah.
So, when you're completing your college applications, is that during the school day or at home?
Literally anytime that I can find, I'm doing it. Like, if I have study hall or during advisory, I'll just fill out like a bunch of questions, because it's really tedious, because like, one, you have to do the essay, and then, two, like, at least like, I'm really like trying to apply for a lot of scholarships, and then another thing is like in the Common App, you pick out what schools you like, and then they have specific questions for each school. It's not like a copy and paste, and it's like for each school, and there, you can just see the same information for each school. It's like one of them asked if I have ever had like a surgery or something, and then another one is like asking, like, they're weird questions, specific to the school, and then sometimes they'll be like, why do you, why are you interested in Providence College? Why are you interested here? It's very tedious.
Yeah.
Thing.
I, I was wondering if it was still like. Awesome, well, good luck.
So wait, you don't go, yeah, let me just ask what we're looking at. So you don't go to each individual school? I can't remember, it's been. Individual school, you now just do one application, it sends off to all the schools, is that how it works now?
No, you have to do each individual.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Well, so there's a Common App that gets a lot of like your theme.
Okay, got it.
Birthdays, all that stuff, so that goes through. Not every school takes, but a bunch of schools. And then there's a Common App essay, which is one essay, that's the same for all of us. But then each school, then learn information, so that's, some of them, there's a few that don't, there's probably a few that you can just like quickly apply to. But a lot of them are asking for supplemental studies and other things.
I don't want to waste anyone's time, just kidding.
No, it's important, it's a big undertaking for the juniors and seniors, this thing.
Yeah, just make a comment, make a comment, I mean, these are good questions that Bill is asking, and, you know. I've asked, it's, I think it may be a good idea for Board of Ed on, 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 you know, in their own time to see if we can have an active access to the Common App. As an example, because it is quite complicated. You know, it, it, there, there are layers and layers and layers, and depends on, again, if you're applying to some of the top, top schools, there are so many different essays that they ask for, so I, I, I empathize with you. It's, it's complicated, so.
So. This, you know, I think part of the challenge is, you know, back when I applied to school, I applied to four schools. Most people apply to ten, not one, apply to ten plus schools, so these schools are getting inundated with applications. So how do you differentiate all of these applications that you're getting? So then it's like, I gotta add essays. I gotta make it where it's a little harder to apply. Um, so it's something has to be fixed in the system. Uh, we can't do that, but there is something that I think is a little broken in the system. Anyway, that's my, my opinion. Uh, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, welcome again.
Good night.
Move on, we have Ms. Hardy.
To wait until the end, if I could, as I think that my comments are very, uh, specifically being more donate, more directed towards the board itself. Um, that would be all right with you, huh?
You're saying you want to wait to the end of the meeting?
Yeah, still towards the end of the meeting, if I could.
So, do you, I need a vote to change the agenda. So, um, what if we move for B? And I'll make a motion to move for B to. Want to, would you want to go before administration reports, before Jeff?
Whatever's most convenient.
Yeah, ever go before us.
Yeah. Why don't we make it? You know, I need, then I gotta make even like B. Eight, C, nine. Can't make it eight. That's discussion action, it can't be in discussion.
You nine.
And D?
Nine D, why don't we do nine D? Why don't you just go way up there? Okay, okay, we'll do it nine D, okay. Make a motion to move agenda item or B, Selectman Representative, to uh, nine D under administration reports. Any comment? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, Lee's here. Opposed, saying, okay. All set, Ms. Hardy. Okay. Uh, discussion action, still the first discussion action item we have for the uh, discussion information for the Aquatic Center update, and you'll notice we did try to add the board goal that it's associated to. Let us know, give us feedback.
Yeah.
And during board comments, if, uh, if this is, uh, what you're looking or thinking about, and it doesn't, so, anyway, discussion and information, Aquatic Center update.
I'll lead, introduce Andrea Scott. Um, Andrea has, uh, been overseeing the aquatics now since, oh, roughly like middle of last? February timeframe of last year, um, as well, I we're all aware, she oversees our for after-school programs, your district, it's a great combination. She's doing a fantastic job, and I'm gonna turn it over to her to give us a brief update.
So, hello, just to give you a little bit more information about myself, um, I was excited to take on the Aquatics and Fitness Centers, I come with lots of experience in the aquatics environment. I was, I started, uh, in Eastline High School as a diver. And then I went on to dive Division One collegiate at University of Rhode Island. And then I returned after college, and I taught diving for a little while with a club team at our aquatic center. So, I'm excited to be a part of the aquatics and fitness area of the center and help them grow and become successful. So, just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on memberships and that sort of thing, so I'm pleased to report our membership numbers are strong and continuing to grow. We have three hundred and fifty-seven active members, and that is across family, individuals, senior, as well as just fitness, um, memberships. We also have twenty-seven active, we run a water aerobics class, and that, you don't have to be a member, so you just buy like a punch card. So we have twenty-seven active punch cards with that, so the center in that sense is doing really well. Our swim lessons and private lessons are in high demand. Um, we are on a waitlist every session. I have, since I've come on board with the products and fitness, we've run two spring sessions of swim lessons, a summer session, as well as, right now, we're in the middle of our second week of our first of two fall sessions, and then in the winter, we do two sessions. So, every session, we have waitlists, so we're working on bringing in more instructors and space to be able to do that. A few other, um, updates about the Aquatics and Fitness Center. We've introduced, uh, new membership policies to go more, um, as well as a self-check-in, so a more efficient way for members to come in to the pool or the fitness center. Um, we've extended our family swim hours, so prior, those were pretty limited, and they were only offered once a week on the weekends. So we now have incorporated family swim time every day that the center is open. We've, um, some updates with our swim lessons, we've introduced mandatory teacher trainings, um, at least once or twice a year, so all teachers or all swim instructors are on board with our swim class curriculum. Um, and we've also introduced some student swim level evaluations, so prior to every session, we now have evaluations, so kids aren't string for the wrong thing, and it gets messy. We've done some updates in with the pool and the, um, we've redone the floors and painted the walls of the birthday party, or I guess extra room that is upstairs at the Aquatics and Fitness Center. So we're excited to start advertising for that and bringing in more birthday parties, or, um, if any programs come in and need a classroom space, they could use that as well. We've streamlined our rental process, so we've created, um, a simple and effective process for renting for birthday parties, but we've also had a lot of, um, I've got inquired, and it kind of made me meet this process, was we have had the DEP come in to do some water training. We've had some state police and law enforcement come in to do water training, and then they use the classroom as well, too, so that is, um, some rental updates there. We are working with the athletic department in updating the fitness center equipment, so some state-of-the-art equipment, so that'll be a nice fresh new feel there, um, and we are certainly waiting the arrival of new lockers in the locker rooms to kind of update those, because our current lockers are need, need, need to be gone. And then we've, um, made significant improvements on our hiring process. We're still currently looking for more staff. We are, we're on some lifeguards, um, so we're working on bringing those in, as well as some more swim instructors, so we can meet the needs of our lessons. So, yeah, so I'm excited to continue with Aquatics and Fitness Center and help it expand our offerings and improve the facilities, and just make it a welcoming center for all of our members.
If anybody knows any lifeguards.
Yes, that's, I put that out there, lifeguards, morning lifeguard.
Always looking, she's always looking for lifeguards.
When you need them.
What, morning, morning, yeah, that's, we have our high school students that work in the afternoon, um, but the morning shifts are pretty hard right now.
I'm across anybody in the community.
No, anyone.
Wasn't there a line item in the budget for replacement of lockers, locker doors? And so is that coming out of?
Yeah, 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 we're, yeah.
That was one of our capital improvement.
Right. Fingers crossed.
Yes, that's your question, yeah.
Yeah, that's my question.
Yeah, we didn't do it tonight, just because things are still in process, we figured that would be doing this, so we're gonna wait till, you know, the October seventh meeting, probably to take a walk around again, because most everything should be done by then.
When do you think this will be completed approximately?
October, around that timeframe.
Yeah, October, they're supposed to be, and then when they deliver them, I think they pull out the old ones and they put the new ones, it should be fairly quick, yeah.
I think our biggest challenge for all of it is getting fly chain of getting, uh, goods here.
They've been ordered for some time now.
And is this within the, uh, budgeted amount? Is this falling within budget?
Professor's not part of your, under your purview, but I'm wondering, two of my kids, when they went to college, they had to pass swimming tests. Is that something that is part of what you do, and like how many kids perhaps can graduate from Eastline High School and know how to swim? Just curious.
So I, I don't know what the requirements are, but I do, this past fall, we did, we worked, I worked at Deb Kelly, and we, um, it was about a week that we had, um, the, we posed it to the public, and the gym classes came in for water safety, so they are in court, starting, we're starting to incorporate that back in the classes.
It's the freshman, freshman.
Very good.
It's, I, I, I mean, it's not necessarily teaching kids how to swim, but it's about being safe for water safety, yes.
Well, we live so close to water, but I think it's.
Very important, very important, very important.
Thank you.
That's a good question. So is part of the gym, are meant that you take a swim class for like six weeks? Is that what we do here? I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, that's what she just mentioned, that we have to order safety.
Oh, you're talking about like swim lessons.
I mean, I'm just, when I was in high school, many, many years ago, we had to take six weeks of, in the pool, swimming lessons. And I didn't know if we, that. And I didn't know if we, that was required, maybe that is just my state, that is no longer requirement. We do, we do one week of water safety for all freshmen, so we have this pool, but we don't use a teach class, we do one week of water safety for all freshmen.
I had a few questions, sorry, I had a few questions, so do you think within, how do you think the impact with us updating your fitness center? In terms of like memberships, do you think it'll?
Think of our.
Broad memberships and where people are getting pools slash fitness center.
Have a member of the, the pool, it includes the fitness center, so you can get so just the fitness center. Or it's the aquatics and fitness center. We have, I think. Free time for fitness is like twenty or maybe. I twenties thirty or solely fitness, um.
And do you manage that? Piece of the fitness center?
Yes, it's, we struggle right now, I think getting some of our. Some members to sign up for fitness because the hours are very limited. Because it can't be open during the school day, because the school uses it, so. We don't have morning hours, because it would be like an hour right before, or I think there's some classes that may use. Or we are, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Yeah, the early bird, so we have, really, it's like two hours in evening that we're open and then on Saturdays from ten to two, but it's, so it's very limited hours. Which is. But the school obviously.
With this new equipment in there, it might open up, you know, a little bit more interest, um. You know, we have had some issues with, you know, some people sneaking in the side door, um, some kids. Andrew and I talked and actually talked to Chris Olson today about getting a camera in there, so at the front desk. Um, they can view what's going on in there for safety reasons too. Um, so we were talking about that today and I'll circle back to the, um, so uh, again. Seeing all that new equipment and when it all comes to fruition, hopefully very soon, I think this week the final pieces are supposed to be arriving, so. Hopefully it will spark.
I haven't yet, I'm hopeful, because it's our new stuff.
It's a couple other questions, so we, first and foremost, before my questions, you're doing a phenomenal job and I, I hear it. Outside of uh, just how much buzz there is about the pool and just different, uh, which is really good. And one thing I noticed is the facility rent, because you mentioned the facility, facility rental income year over year is down a lot, is that because? We had like bought, didn't we, like that room was?
It was not, it was full of.
Stuff, so.
So we have cleaned it out, the floors were redone, we painted it and so I have just. In the end process of putting out some advertisements about rentals for a birthday party or other meeting.
So that, it's been negligible because we really didn't have a room to do that, okay, that's really.
So we didn't, we did this past. End of spring and begin the summer, I did do a few birthday parties. With their space being sitting on the picnic tables outside after, so we kind, it was not necessarily. Yes, exactly, so that was why I pushed to add that, because I feel like there's, I mean, even before advertising it, I got, I'm getting calls. Asking how much and all that sort of stuff, so.
Then, great, and then last question, there's the COVID credit refunds, the eighteen thousand that we paid. Is that, like, is, are we now all square with COVID?
Becky went. All everyone sent out checks, we did everything, so.
That's good. Thank you so much.
Thanks Andrea.
Thank you.
Next up, someone bring prayer and gifts too, we have discussion information, food service update. Ashley and Chris.
Hello, everybody.
Cooler back there, just so everybody be.
Yes, that'll come later. I think. He's just working on this, we got a few slides for you to see. You, we can pull that up too, Chris, right on the, if people are on um, Zoom, they wanna. You're gonna pull it up too.
Can you see by me?
You're fine. Just for a second, there you go. It flashed, there it is. Um, yep, so we're, we're starting with uh, this year, you're actually hidden now. Alright, perfect, so new for twenty four twenty five, um. The state eliminated the free breakfast for all students. Um, they are continuing with stable funds though, which is. Fully funding the reduced students, so the reduced students don't have to pay the small amount of money that's associated would be considered a reduced benefit. Uh, thirty cents at breakfast and forty cents at lunch, so the state of Connecticut is still picking up that portion. The breakfast counts are down quite a bit, um, sixty percent at the elementary and around forty percent to middle school and high school level. Um, we kind of anticipated that with not being free anymore, that uh, families. Course wouldn't be, we're still the best deal in town as far as the cost goes uh, for a week, but um. So, starting in October, we're gonna be rolling back the breakfast menu like we used to have, so it'll be set days that are. Set menu items, so we'll have like the hot breakfast sandwich day, the pancake day, the smoothie day. Just to give the parents a little more idea of what we're serving and if their students will actually eat it, trying to get a little more participation that way. Uh, lunch counts are very stable though, they, they haven't moved much at all, they pretty much. Took off right where they ended last year.
We had a slight increase in cost, right?
We did, we had, the state had the requirement that we went up, so we went up ten cents on each level.
For lunch.
For lunch, yeah, breakfast, we didn't raise at all.
Yeah, we just wrapped up, um, the last two weeks, we had open houses at each of the schools. Um, so we did little snack samples and showed the parents some of the meal offerings we have for lunch. Um, so we had smoothies, we had our apples from Scott's, cookies of course. Um, and then on the right you can see examples of some of the alternative lunches we offer at the elementary level, um. And middle school and all the other levels too, but um, some Lunchables, uh, chicken Caesar salad, a hummus and vegetable meal. Um, as well as the yogurt muffin meal, which is same.
Now we have our continuing uh, farm to table, we uh. Very successful with the greenhouse that you guys approved last year. Um, the Flanders students planted all the starter seeds and as you can see in the middle picture, the garden grew. Very well this year, uh. So uh, we were actually able to get a lot of products out of it, started the school year, um, we had some cantaloupe that um, we were able to serve at lunch. That the students grew, uh, we also had used a lot of their product in the salads. Uh, for the side salads and in the salad bar at the high school. Um, one of the items we actually had at the open house, which is in the cooler over there for you guys to share. Uh, take home with you, we made a fresh garden salsa. Uh, so they, we pretty much used the whole garden, it's in that jar. And it was very popular at the open house and we actually got completely wiped out. And uh, Gary White's been doing a lot with his class too, also doing a lot of harvesting and also um, we do some. Taste test sampling actually in his class also, where his kids kind of get to try it first because they picked it and then we. Moved into some of the other schools to, to try.
They, you're saying they can have salsa and chips tonight for Monday night football?
Monday night football, it's all set, the chips are in there, everything.
They're in there too. So you're, there's two games tonight, so.
You have to spread it out.
Yeah, some events coming up on the radar, we have um, Connecticut growing for Connecticut Kids Week, um, which got us just highlighting the farm to table. Um, we, we already do a lot of the apples from Scott's, but um, in the fall, we also get a lot of different um, alternatives of squash, peppers, things like that, so. Um, we'll be having more samples as well as um, crunch day, um, which we have annually where every kid, no matter if they get lunch or not. Um, can have the apple, see how loud the crunch can be from everyone biting into the apple at once, encourage more fruits and vegetables. Um, that way, and then we'll also have garden salads all week, um, at the elementary levels. Um, to encourage again more local um, vegetable consumption.
And we're bringing back the Viking Cafe. Actually, we're having an open invitation for you guys if you want to come, uh, we're doing two events, one in October, the one in November will be the one that you guys will be able to come to. Um, and it's where we set up on the catwalk. Over here in front of the, the commons and uh, the culinary students actually are the maider D's, they take the reservations. They wait the tables and serve the food. Um, so it gives them the culinary class a little bit idea of future workings.
We're gonna.
We're interested in how do we let, who do we let now?
Yeah, Chris and I, we'll work together and we'll send out a, like a, an invite with a reminder. Yeah, exactly, they would, so uh, be great time to get, come in and have lunch.
We bring a guest?
Let's see how many we get, yeah.
It's only fifteen, fifteen.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Fifteen spots for admin and us total, so.
Yeah, we can flex with that if we get.
We can move around it. Yep. Well, um, and we're doing two different themes, we're gonna do more of a uh. We're gonna do like athletics theme in October and then we're gonna do a harvest theme in November. So um, we'll have different menus focusing on that area and um. The same menu will be served down in the cafeteria to all the students that day too, so it'll be the, the same menu.
Need to bring cash.
Yeah, you have to bring cash.
Important question.
Uh, also our catering is, we've pretty much got taken off back to where it was, we're, we're servicing the football team. The boys and girls soccer team, the volleyball team. Right now, um, and we've had a lot of the spring and winter sports reach out to us too about doing their away game meals. And uh, so it's starting to take off, the year's starting to take off.
You know, I gotta say, Chris had, and, and Ashley had, they had a great idea about us. Purchase a truck for the purchasing of boats, we can start doing fresh seafood. So, you know, it's just something.
See the table.
See the table. Fresh fish, scallops. Just something for the future, thinking about how the program goes, so we'll see.
Questions for Chris.
I just have to say thank you, that rhubarb last spring was phenomenal and I'm still thinking about it, so. And I'm sure whatever you tucked in, in the corner is gonna be just as good, so you guys do a great job, I really appreciate it.
And we had another round of that for the fall, actually, they had it uh. Yesterday at the high school.
Um, for open house, we do strawberry rhubarb shortcake as a dessert.
Well, I love rhubarb, my husband hates it, so I'm like, this is great.
Yeah, and we did it on Friday for um, they had some brunch for lunch here at the high school and they had as a side, they could put with their French toast.
Good question, I don't think this is appropriate, but is, have we thought about doing greenhouses in this, in the other two elementaries? Or is that too big of a project?
Well, there's been, talks about a garden.
We're talking about expanding the gardens and actually, we can use the greenhouse we have to be the starter. And then the, the seedlings can be shared between, you know, the other schools.
It'd be, it'd be great, just somebody to manage, like Gary White does a great job.
Yeah, it's really having the management at each of those schools. I know, Nyanic Center definitely um, has somebody that wants to do it.
Well, that's right.
It's just um. You gotta get the time to actually build the raised beds and then we could start it over there too.
I have a quick question, did you ever, um, I don't necessarily need an answer, but do you ever think about any type of promotions like? By. For breakfast, you get one for, or anything like that, or I don't know if you're even allowed to do that, but do any kind of promotions?
Yeah, we're not allowed to be give away any free meals, that's the program, but we, we definitely do promotions, um. We were talking earlier, um, for, for COVID, we actually used to do a promotion at the high school for breakfast where we would get. Um, some of my providers would donate like apple cards and stuff. And you could like buy a breakfast sandwich, get a raffle ticket for the apple card, you know, so we, we can do those type of things.
We do um, themed days to draw in more students, so we have like World Series Day coming up in October, things like that. Could you do a meal for a penny?
No, because it's gonna be, yeah, it's gotta be in the. It's there's, in the price range, yeah.
And we're already below that.
We're already below it, yeah, so.
Excellent, well, thank you so much, we appreciate the update.
Alright.
And the food. Next agenda item is discussion information, high school vision committee update, so. Just to refresh everyone's memory on the April twenty second, you may not remember it, it's a while ago, April twenty second, we actually made a motion. To create, to give Jeff the ability to populate a committee to start looking at the next. Phase for high school, so for our high building, sorry, speaking very well, but you know, we have this facility, it was. I hear different things, somewhere in the late sixties, uh, it was completed sixty eight, sixty nine, first class was sixty eight, sixty nine, something like that. And so as we are thinking and kind of trying to think ahead over the next five to ten years, that we maybe. Need to start doing something. And we had talked in that meeting and we had said, well, we should probably get a committee together to start looking at, at that. We did approve uh, to give Jeff the ability to start a committee, uh, or to, to populate the committee, so look for Jeff to give an update. We did have that, um, as Devon and myself had volunteered from the board of Ed to be part of that. Uh, during that meeting and then I said to Jeff to give an update on. Uh, what, where we are and the next steps.
Yes, so we um. We were pondering, you know, some over the summer, um, as the school year ended last year and thinking about, okay. Formulate, you know, that committee, a vision committee. Um, it came down to the fact that we've, we figured out that we need to formulate a smaller committee to start, because what we need to do first and foremost. Is a feasibility study on this building, so we needed an architect, uh, you know, outside of organization to come in. Um, and do a whole study of, you know, what's good, what's not, um, age, etcetera, within this building and then within the grounds of this campus as well. Um, questions out there, could we potentially, you know, build up behind the high schools, fields up behind the high school, if you haven't been up there? Um, could we use that space for building, um, could Doyle Field, um, be another, you know, reasonable location to do something with turf? Or, you know, at this point from, you know, feedback and information that we've received, you know, from the town, which we need to do another analysis of. And that's one of the things we have to go out and do with the town is, what could we do with Doyle Field, could it be, you know, built upon? Um, so we have to look at uh, those components, so we want to put together a, a smaller committee to really orchestrate. That feasibility study, now that feasibility study really would take. Probably this entire school year to, to go through, get done, evaluate, and then toward in the spring, our hope would be. Uh, to then use that feasibility study to pull together a larger uh, vision committee, and that larger vision committee would consist of. You have like fifteen to twenty five group, large group of, you know, few, few teachers, parents, etcetera. But the smaller committee would uh, would orchestrate, you know, a group of about ten individuals, um, who would help us just get that. That feasibility setting up off the ground. And then somewhere in there, to development of, of a charter. Um, and there's some other steps too that we have to, we have to look at, we want to look at, you know, the town finances, what's coming off of town debt in the next, you know, few years. Um, or review of the other school buildings too, where they fall in the spectrum of needing eventual updates. Our elementary schools, as we know, were just renovated seven years ago. Uh, the middle school is now twenty three years old, but it's in very good shape, twenty four years, it's in very good shape. Yeah, that guy would, um, the roof, you know, we just got the roof, uh, re, re, uh, uh, new application on the roof, so that should last us another. You know, twenty years at the middle school, hopefully we'll have the United Center roof and the Lily B roof. Done in the next two years as well, so where do we fall with, you know, slipping in a potential high school project that isn't, is not gonna have. A great impact on our community and, and taxes, uh, for state bonding. So, those are some of the things that we're looking at, that Doyle Field piece too, we've got to look into, you know, what we can or can't do, you know, with Doyle Field, that isn't even an option to. Potentially, you know, use the space.
Things that when we did the addition to high school, that was very, very valuable was the opportunity to have funding. Help to visit other recently renovated schools.
Thank you, that's another one that's on our list to be talked about.
We had a small group, um, was, you know, to the west coast. To observe some of the more contemporary schools and. Not now we got the funding for it, but somehow we managed to do it, so that in the course of this, every teacher at the high school. Went to observe at one point or another, another school in the area and not just by subject area. By the total picture. And I think that that was one of the most invaluable things that we did, uh, even such things as looking at furniture. And um, you know, what worked and what didn't for a high school setting and to have a variety, not order the same desks for every room. So I think that, I thought, I think that's a really, after you have your initial, you know, setup to really. To really work that into the schedule and um. Figure out how we can fund it. I mean, some of us paid our own expenses.
Yeah, it's a great point, Miss Hardy, and and. You know, how technology has become so incorporated into the classroom, which trying to think about how. How is it best? Trying to do what's best. Today to make sure you're delivering a good education for the students, but also. Ten and twenty years from now, fifty years from now, I don't I don't know what to expect, right? But you you kind of at least go. Look ten, twenty years out and making sure that you're. Creating something that can handle. And where technology goes. That's gonna be.
I would really recommend that it's one of the earlier phases to help in the planning. You know, some of the things that we wanted to do, they just weren't got, as you said, in the realm of. Financial responsibility, but people in this community want. A good school system. We're noted for this. And um. We don't, we're not on the expensive side, but we're creative. And that's what we had to tap into. We got a lot of creative people here. And a lot of community minded people. And um. I think we can do a good job.
That's definitely hip. One of those things we want to do and what the one of the first things that will be coming back to the board um, soon or later will be. The cost on the feasibility study from the architect that will need a board. Um, as uh, making sure we have, you know, the funding to be able to, you know.
And how are you going to go about deciding on the architect?
We already have one on board um, that is, we're working with our district. We're starting there and seeing what uh, you know, what's gonna be for potential costs. We go from there.
Are you going to consider other architectural firms that you've decided on this?
At this point, we.
For the feasibility study or for the project?
I'd ask about both.
Yeah, feasibility study for the the one that we're working with, that we have on basically retainer, but the the larger scale project, of course, that would go out to to bid. Sure.
I'm just almost wondering if it could be a a student project at the university or graduate level where. Young architects could throw out designs for and ideas for different schools and different. Ways that we could go about doing it.
You can tap into our own. Kids are taking, you know, design classes here to get, we want students that'll be part of, you know, the the final of the large vision committee. Um, and getting their input into this just as much as teachers, um, parents, uh, community, all stakeholders.
And I'm wondering if anybody's friends with Herb Chambers in old line and they could just fly off in his helicopter.
I I'm not, but you know, I'd like to be friends with him, maybe.
Fly up and visit.
Keep you posted and apprised as we move forward. Just want to give an update.
Okay, moving on, uh, discussion action, town capital improvement committee.
Yeah, I don't know if you had a chance. This kind of, this came upon us rather quickly um. At the board of selectmen meeting last Wednesday, when we were getting the roof projects that I let you know. This information was shared, um, they, the town uh, the board second approved this that night. They would like to formulate. A uh, they had a proposal for a capital improvement program committee. Uh, and if you have a chance to kind of look at that, those, you know, documents that we shared, they laid out, you know, what that committee would be, what they would recommend be comprised of. And what the committee, you know, would do and basically it's, you know, reviewing and preparing the capital needs assessment, looking at capital projects. And prioritizing those capital projects uh, across using a scale um, across the uh, you know, all town buildings. Uh, and making determinations about, you know, what would go forward and um. How that process would uh, would occur. Um, this is new. This has not been done this way, at least in, you know, in my ten years of working with the town. We did have years back, uh, capital improvement committee where myself, Mariana, um. Still these uh, you know, Chris line, we would go and we'd be regularly with the first segment and the other departments, go through our capital items. Um, this speaks to a five year versus a ten year two, if I read correctly. Um, currently we have a ten year out there, so we've got some conversations about that. But uh, that's basically what they're looking for. We spoke briefly, I'll turn it back over to you as to pertaining to the membership.
Yeah, so Jeff and I did, we found out this um. So this is all, this is right, uh, just in terms of how how long we've had to to think about it. But we did get a chance to talk about it and what we were thinking is, we think about the board of ed facility projects, you know. Who really? Kind of needs to, in your prioritizing and advocating. Feels like Chris Lund needs to be part of that. He's our facilities director and driving a lot of what we do here. Mariana, it's there's a finance component to this and a cost and we're, you know, some of the bigger costs. And then Jeff. Obviously overseeing and having an impression on how he would prioritize for the F district. So we were thinking that. Interested in feedback, but having those three plus one board of ed member would be a good. Team, an informed team and be able to kind of influence that. Priorization and 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 the decision making. That's not exactly what was proposed for what we would do. But we were thinking that might be better versus having, let's say, two board of ed members and not. Chris nor Mariana nor Jeff. Are we the right people to be able to? Influence or or do we know the details to prioritize and say, yes, this roof is more important than this other thing, which is more important than. And we have opinions. I don't, I don't know that I feel, I know for myself, I would not feel comfortable without. You know, Chris, Mariana, Jeff. So anyway, interested in people's thoughts. Hope we would go, actually go with those three, our proposal, they may not agree with that, but our proposal would be. Those three plus one board of ed member, which we can talk about, or what they asked for is two board of ed members, so. Interested in people's thoughts. How many?
I think that's a good idea.
I I agree with that line of, your line of thinking, you know, like the expertise. I just don't know if. That's what they're asking us. Do you know, like?
Well, it seems like it's, again, I, we haven't. Hard to know, I, you know, you guys have as much. If if you're gonna really prioritize. Town, something at town hall versus a roof on Lily B versus someone. I don't feel, I know I would not feel very comfortable representing the board of ed without having. No, it's so, but it sounds like they're gonna make those decisions and really are gonna, and if they're really gonna make those decisions. If it's more broad, hey, what's on your list? What are you gonna do? Then I. Less concerned, but if it's a, oh, may not be decision making, but close to decision making. Then I feel like we need our people. That that's just.
No, I agree. I would agree with you, yeah.
Uh, how many, what is the size of the size of the committee to be?
Well, there's no, it's just being formed. Uh, but it was three, they were asking.
Two board of ed members and one member from the community.
I remember that part of the discussion early on, but I didn't hear the second part of the conversation.
So if you guys.
I own them, Jill, and then.
Just a quick question, because are, have you fleshed out with or worked out with the board of selectmen? I'm not sure who's steering it. Is it all right if we send? People, you know, what was requested versus, and I think what you're saying should be there are the right people that should be there. Have we, have we talked with them about that?
So I think, uh, when Jeff and I spoke is, but we need to come to agreement, because I don't want to say, hey, this is what we think and then the board doesn't. And thinks we should do something different. So if we're in agreement. With a certain direction, then we can have the conversation. It may come back to us where they say, sorry, no way. That's not what we're thinking and here's why. Hopefully there's the here's why and then we can reassess. It's not. I think it's starting like.
Well, yeah, soon, but no, that's why we brought forty about.
We don't even know who's gonna chair it either, so.
Kevin? It doesn't say.
Yeah, I didn't see anything in there, so.
It does. I was looking again.
For the formative stages, but I really think there should be two board of bed people. You are, you were elected to represent the town.
But I'm okay. I mean, I'm personally, if we have a board of ed member plus. The subject matter experts.
So why don't we make that recommendation? Right, have. The two, well, to Roseanne's point, two board of ed members plus. I mean, Jeff, you could be considered a member of the public. You live here in town, so you represent seriously. Um, and I don't know, Mariana, if you live in, I mean, you know, we do have people who. And wear multiple hats simultaneously and think about this creative creatively, so. But well-informed decisions is really important, up. Priority, prioritizing that whole point and underscoring what you've already said, so I don't want to be redundant, but. We do need to have people who know the nuts and bolts. I mean, we know it at a supervisor or a forty thousand. View vantage point, but we don't know the nuts and bolts of the daily. So absolutely, we, and we cannot be making. Long-term visionary plans without having some real.
It's just, it's just, and Miss Hardy's point, I think. When we put our capital plan together, that is something we all provide and provide inputs, whomever that board of ed representative is with. You know, the three in that. They would be representing our collective views, not. We should be, it should be a, whether it's one or two, it should be our collective views, not the individual views. Uh, Bill, I just, I know you would. No, I, yeah, I think. When it comes to that kind of thing, it's. Or persons gonna end up being. Looking for information from Chris in order to do that, so it doesn't seem to me. Makes sense to to do it that way. I mean, if we need to have a board rep there, then that's fine, but I. Me, the person who's walking the roof. All the, yeah, the person who knows the roof.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's why we brought that position in. To give, to have an accurate picture of what our capital movement needs are, so I. Think that makes sense to me.
I I agree. As I was just looking at the membership, uh, that they're looking for and they, they're just gonna turn around and circle back to. Ask questions, so I think you're gonna have a spin the wheel process here.
And you don't want that. Us, the board of selectmen and us are for.
Board of finance.
You know, what I'm saying, we own build, not own buildings. We inhabit buildings, so we really have a serious interest in this. So I, to me, that supports, we want the people on board. We're gonna spend the money, we want the experts. Not that we as board of ed members are not export, experts, but I'm just saying, who are, who's coming off in the board of selectmen? Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I have a lot of questions.
Does the town have a Chris?
They have the building commit.
Yeah, they have a director of public works.
But is he?
And they they have other. Apartment zoning and uh, but I don't know who, how they would, how they're interpreting.
I mean, I sure hope that Joe would be part of this.
I would hope so. It's just, you know, the only statement in here is C I P review committee will have department heads and other town employees as resources. To throughout the process. That to me doesn't say you're on the committee, you're a resource, we'll call you. I don't agree with that.
They need to have more of a voice at the table.
I have a question, a clarification. We are charged with doing tonight, are we? Are we deciding on the structure of what we're proposing for a person or a number?
So I, I think, so we were asked to give something, I think, what. Jeff and I spoke is. To give something a little different back, see what.
Like the structure that.
That's right, that we are proposing, yeah, and then see. You know, see where that goes. I mean, if they're proposing to. To be honest, if they're proposing a committee and Joe Burgah is not. Member of the committee, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, so maybe we can influence that part of it as well, like I I need the experts. To.
I agree.
Uh, that's my my view, whatever. Um. I think so. You come to agreement on what we're gonna propose back, so they ask for something, we're proposing potentially something back that's different than they ask for. They may come back and then we may have to iterate and come back as a team and say, oh, they said, no, they really need this and here's why. We can have another discussion. I think we should give a name for the board. And I think we should give and say, here are, here are the. I would, I would like to be able to say, here are four names and here's, here's our why. Uh, these are our four names.
Yeah, yeah, I'm I'm aligned with that. Okay, so it sounds like you outlined as a member, uh. Finance director. Jeff. For us. And then so that's three, and then are you talking about yourself and another blind member?
I'm not, and I, I don't, I actually prefer not to be the person.
Okay.
Why?
Yeah, you have a lot.
I think we, yeah, I, I mean, I think. One of my other concerns with two board of ed members is we're all, we're trying to get a lot done in our school. We're all on a lot of committees and subcommittees and stuff. So not only do we commit a lot of time to here, there's other things that we're committing time to. Um, really looking to see if someone interested in doing.
I am, I would like to do it, if you're taking names, Kevin.
How's everybody? I mean, we're not, this is not discussion action, but it's, we're, we're making a proposal. So, yeah, thanks, Jill, I appreciate it and and if everybody's okay, we'll. Push forward. First, Mariana, Jeff, and Jill.
Yeah. This video is gonna circle back around uh, too, so. So we'll push that back to that.
And this, this is, this may not be the last conversation that we have at our board of ed, but we need to push. It'd be good to give them something, an idea of. Here's what we're thinking.
Oh, a couple of years ago, I sat on a committee um, for affordable housing. And the planning and zoning directors were. They weren't part of the committee, but they were at every meeting. They were there as resources. I'm not sure. That's what the intention is. Thanks from from the board of selectmen.
Yeah, I just, it very well could be, and I have a feeling they'll come back and say, we want the voting, these are the voting members. But you can have whatever resource you want behind it. I want. You, I want. You know, Jeff, Chris and Mariana to have. We're just then gonna. For the most part, that's what they said, so we're, you know, that's how I kind of feel, is they're, they're gonna influence that a lot. Um. But I guess it's a little hard to know what this committee, how it's all gonna work if it's in its forming stage. Um, it could go in a lot of different directions and maybe there is. Something below that as well, where there's more of those, you know, Chris is talking with Joe Burgoff of the town. Jeff's talking with um. Dan, I guess, and Mariana's talking with Kevin, you know, maybe all that stuff is also going. But from this, it's not clear.
So I think your strategy, your plan, I think sounds solid, Eric. Go back with the three employees, if that's not a burden to them. To you, Jeff and Mariana and Chris. And then Jill, and maybe somebody wants to be an alternate or Jill does like to cruise.
I, if if someone wants to be, I'm happy for them to be an alternate. I'm also, like, if it's periodically and I need to go, I. Happy to go periodically, but.
I think that's a good strategy or good plan to stick just back to them, so it's a win-win all around. Just makes them sure someone, board members there.
I'll share that um. Recommendation back to Dan and uh. Um, Dan Cunningham, and then we'll see what we get for feedback and then I'll, we're gonna bring it back to the October seventh meeting, we'll bring it back.
And with the why is important, like, why are we, because. Here are subject matter experts, we're really reliant here. We have an opinion and we will apply as a board. So something. Okay. Oh, it says there's a motion to appoint the board, but I don't think we're gonna, because we gotta figure out what we're doing.
Exactly. We have an idea of discussion. We weren't sure where we can go with that, but.
Okay, then. We're not gonna have a motion. It was discussion for an information, discussion. We're not gonna have a motion, it was discussion for an information, discussion, uh. So then, we're on E. Yeah, yeah, so, uh, discussion, action, non-lapsing account. So if you recall, give a little background, we had proposed creating this non-lapsing account, which was an account that we could, if we. Have funds left over within the year, we could put them in up to two percent, I think it was, into this. Count, which then we could use in the future, um, rather than quote-unquote giving it back to the town. In order for us previously to do that, we needed, uh, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance approval to create that account, the Board of Finance. Like, I don't know, there, there, more, more to finance, we're not in favor of that. Um, so we did not create the account, so we had all agreed to create it, but then, or to finance for, they thought. That there's, you know, other ways to manage that, and and we're not in favor, but subsequently and recently. State.
Yeah, legislation being forward.
Can do it, we don't need approval from Board of Finance or Board of Selectmen, we can just go and create this account. It's up to us to use it or not, but the creation of the account, um. Is what we're here to discuss and see if we're in favor of creating the account.
Yeah, and I think, hopefully you had a chance to look at the red line version, which basically just changed everything to, you know, Mariana setting up the account and and Board of Ed oversight. Um, one question, just wanna bring your attention on the last paragraph, Mariana and I were talking back and forth with. Where you want with the, um, the amount that it doesn't exceed, so if the balance we had. If the balance of the account exceeds four percent of preceding fiscal year's approved budget, and the excess balance will go back to the, you know, the town. I wouldn't want to go necessarily any higher than a hundred percent, because remember, these funds can roll over year to year, so we can continue to use them. Uh, we don't want it to get, you know, too big of a pot of money, it shouldn't grow to be a big pot of money, that's why we kind of had a cap, so.
We have to have a cap at all, I'm sure we can find later to extend it.
Oh, we will, I think, I think it's just formality, saying, I'm sure that there's a, there's a cutoff as to.
If we don't, we don't want, you know, four million, five million, six million, and all of a sudden sitting in this account. We don't want, and then the town's like. Why don't you use that money for your.
So we would be able to use this like for high school renovations. We're saving up for it, basically, with this account.
Uh, you could, you could call it, um, that piece is just, there's that, how much you you're, or want to save. It's, you know, it's there to to use, could be used for special education funds, you know, let's say, like, remember, was it two years ago, we had that overage because of. Um, some special ed costs, uh, we could use the money at that point.
Yeah, the inflation, utilities, their health insurance, special, everything went up, and we're like a half.
Well, we were, we froze the budget, we were getting ready to go back for special appropriation to the town. We talked to them about that, we wouldn't, if we had these funds, we could turn right to those funds and offset that, of course. So that's another good reason to have it in play, as a little bit of an emergency backup, so we don't have to go to the town for appropriation.
Oh, yeah, quick question, um, can you remind me the Board of Finance's, like, main reason for not initially approving? Just a quick refresher on that rationale.
Yeah, so a couple of reasons, like two or three.
They thought.
Slush fund.
It was, they thought that we should be able to.
Hold it down.
Go to them, yeah. Yeah, that's, yes, that's, that's what, yeah, which was ironic, because we were just over budget and trying to go to them and, and.
Yeah, they didn't want to do the appropriation.
Help us out, um, yeah, the irony was, was very true, but they're like, uh, you know, it doesn't ever happen, and if it does, it does, we're here. Yes, um, which.
That's right, thank you.
At one time in ten years or a plus that we needed it, and we didn't get help.
So, historically, how much money is, you know, have we kind of left, have left over?
It varies year to year.
Yeah.
It varies, I mean, this year we're at about thirty five, uh, share twenty, you know, twenty-three, twenty-four, it's about thirty-five to thirty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, we had one year where we had a, a freeze, and we had to turn some money over, it was.
Thirty fifty, yeah, a hundred, two hundred thousand somewhere in there.
Put it toward that lawsuit, so we kind of, yeah, that was like the most that we had available. Uh, but we were planning, using it for that.
Well, with oral, I think this is a good idea, I mean, it's having, having a backup source for a rainy day, you know, this, this works, you know, I'm trying to see. Either the, the cap of two percent. Within what we typically see, okay, and, you know, from, um, my, um, my. What vantage point, I, I would say that, well, even if, even if you have a buildup of funds, because over maybe two years, three years, we. We, we, you know, we are, uh, we are efficient in using what is available, and we end up saving. Uh, we could use that money to offset some of the budget increases, so it, it is, it is. Our discretion, I mean, the board's discretion to kind of decide that, okay, we'll give the town a break, we'll use these monies. So, I mean, you know, having caps is okay, but, you know, uh, it, you know. But if you, if you do end up saving money, so that, you know, the two percent cap is okay for a year, I, I, I get that, that's legislative.
I'm sorry, can I, it's not a cap, that's what you're allowed to put in every.
Every year, so, okay, so that makes sense, right, so that makes sense, because. But if, if we build up money, because we, we, we do this every year, that four percent cap is what. Worrying me, in the sense, like, well, if you do well, if the board does well, if the school system does well, and you end up saving more money, well. Why not be, you know, channel that back, why is that cap of four percent, so, that's the only question I have.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a good one, I'm not married to that, and that's why we highlighted it, to kind of bring it up for discussion, to see what you all thought. Uh, if you, you want to have no cap, you know.
Four percent.
Like two point four million.
Point four million, yeah, yeah.
Again, I don't know, I don't know whether that we will ever get to that, all right, based on the numbers that. But if you have a windfall, you know, somebody gives us a donation of some kind, and we, then we have left over, Miss, Miss Bill, of course, we, we want to help the town. We don't, you know, it's, you're not going to sit on five million and not help the town, it's not gonna happen. It's just that, I mean, the cap is kind of puts a, puts a psychological barrier for us, you know, I mean, so let's say we accumulate money and. But four percent may be good enough, but having a cap kind of makes, makes me, makes me wonder, but. But based on the numbers, maybe that'll never be an issue, so maybe it's okay, but.
Guys can make the decision to, if, if, if we had a windfall and we had, you know. Three hundred thousand, you don't have to put, you could make the choice to say, okay, we'll put. X number in the fund, and the rest gets turned over, it doesn't mean. Right, if you set this up, it doesn't mean you have to put it in.
It's another option, yeah.
Other thoughts on the cap?
Well, I think, also, it could be reviewed at some point later on, like in a year or two, right, it does, because we save four percent tonight. It doesn't have to stick at four percent for eternity.
Yeah, it could, it could change.
Hey Jimmy, we could put language in that says like one percent for the first year, two years, and then reevaluate. Or just make a note to reevaluate it.
Yeah, why don't we, I don't know that we'd put it in their document, but maybe it's just, because we, the only thing is, it'd be good to. Actually put money into the count, see that this works, and how it all feels, and everything like that as well, um. So maybe it's just something we put on the agenda. A year from now, at least a year from now, right?
Because the first year would be twenty-four, twenty-five, so. We wouldn't have the final numbers, the way I worded it in the years, once I file. September first is when I file the E F S, which is the final count, accounting, so, yeah, so, then we would have to vote. There's money left over to decide what we would.
So that would be in the September, that's when we vote to put it in.
Correct.
Then it would have to be after for us to evaluate how we, what we feel about that, so it's probably. Late twenty twenty-five, um, that we bring, put this on our agenda, we can just do a check in and see how we're doing.
What would this be entitled? Is line item, what would that?
It's not a line item, it is, uh, it would be a vote of the Board of Education, I would provide them. With a report sometime, probably in late August, to, uh, the final accounting, to see what, you know, what. Any funds, there were any funds left over, and then they would vote and decide whether they would want to put. That into this un, uh, expended account, and I would create. It'd be an account, a savings account, and it's outlined in here, I would be able to invest it in. Uh, the statutory, uh, accounts that are allowed by the state.
Okay, so, uh, would it be fair? Would it be fair to just refer to it as a savings account?
I titled it unexpended, um, education funds account is what it's titled.
That aligns with the legislative components.
Okay, so. We want to hear, so I'm gonna make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to create a non-lap, non-lapsing account on the unexpended education fund reserved for the Board of Education use. Not to exceed two percent of the prior fiscal year total budget appropriation as presented.
Okay.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Uh, opposed, abstaining. Get that account, uh, yeah, um, okay, next order, discussion, action, policy. Discussion, uh, review by law nine, three, two, five, point two, order of business meeting minutes. So, um, I mentioned at the. There are board comments at last meeting about, you know, can we move minutes into the consent agenda? Uh, so we can just do it as part of the consent, rather than reading each one, this time we had. Two, sometimes we have three, uh, to go procedurally, and, uh, this was. It's two parts, one is opportunity, so we can actually discuss and comment if anybody has any thoughts, and then two is, if we want to do it. Um, we do actually need to probably send it to policy, because in our policy, we actually have. The structure of our meeting, uh, and one of the piece of the structure is approval of minutes. So we need to adjust the policy, uh, in order to do that, but we're pushing, asking the policy to do that. Just wanted to see are people aligned and comfortable? And, and if there's anything in the minutes that you didn't, don't like, have a question on, want to change. Then you just ask that we pull it from consent, and then we put it in another place on the agenda, and then we go through it, so it's not that you can't do that. But it's rare when we do, so that was the thing, in other districts I mentioned, other, uh. Boards of Ed do put it under, not all, but it's, it's a mixed bag, but some do put it under consent. Any thoughts?
So the only question I would have is, so, is our general practice for most of us, if we didn't attend, like, that meeting that we like abstain or. Or whatnot, so like, would we have to, like, if it's in the consent agenda with other stuff? It gives, you know.
It's a good question, see what people, my view is, you know, read the minutes. And if you're okay with the minutes, then you can approve them, if the other things are in there. That's somewhat where I am, I didn't look at, I didn't pay attention to the other boards. And what they do, and then I think it's our practice to abstain, I don't know that all boards have had abstain, I, on the learn board, of, learn board. People don't attend, and they still approve the minutes, they read them, and they. I think that's more been our practice, but I don't know if anybody have.
The bigger thing, it's just so it's noted, right, that you were either, you were either in or not in attendance, and it's documented correctly on the minutes themselves.
Well, the interpretation has been that, uh, if you state that you have read the minutes. You feel informed, you can vote.
People, okay, generally, then we get, pass it to policy, to adjust the policy. Which is so people know in terms of timing, because you're gonna see minutes for a while, because the policy just met today, they meet again in November. And then we'll have thirty days to review the policy, first reading, well, first reading, thirty days, second reading, so. It's probably gonna be January before we actually see a change in their agendas.
We'd be simply moving that in the process of approval of minutes, and we would write it under consent.
Makes sense, I think it helps expedite our meetings.
Okay, um, last discussion, action item, we have the. A board recognition awards application. Uh, thank you, Carissa, who pulled all this together, uh, really appreciated, it is a lot of work. For what they asked for a lot of information, um, it is good, I do enjoy reading it, because it's reflect, sometimes you forget what you've done. And kind of just keep moving forward, and you don't reflect back as to. Uh, you know, all that we've done in the year, and, and I do think, so there's a lot that, that has been done across the district, and. Anyway, did anyone have any thoughts, comments? We do need, remember, when do we need to file that by?
If you want it to be submitted by October fourth, you have to agree that I'm submit, you know, that we're submitting the application. With the respective application points as is, because we will not meet again as a board until after the due date. So.
Thanks, Carissa.
No, no pressure. But.
A motion?
It's ready.
Submit to Cape Board Recognition Awards, Board of Distinction, Level Two Award Application as presented.
Second, second, further discussion, all those in favor, say aye, aye. Opposed, abstaining. Motion passes, okay, that closes, that's great, and thanks again, Carissa. Next, we're, that closes discussion, action, moving on to administration reports, and we are nine A, Jeff.
Uh, yeah, just really a couple of just recaps, um, from some of my, um, information, my weekly updates. Uh, I just want to circle back to make sure, um, that we'll have that cell phone, um, discussion on ten twenty-one. Both, uh, the high school is gonna be here to present that, and I should, it's great, good night, they could share that information out, I talked to Mrs. Kelly. And then our other Mrs. Kelly, Ladeen from the middle school, can chime in as well, um, from the middle school perspective, because I know that came up at our, um, recent, uh, previous meeting. To have a little discussion on that, so we'll do that then, um, ten seven, uh, we're gonna circle back on A I. Uh, so our next Board of Ed meeting, um, we, uh, you know, we had that, uh, presentation and discussion with Matt Mervis. At that committee, the whole meeting, thought that was a really good discussion, but don't want to lose sight of the work that's going on there, so we'll engage in some further discussion, we're gonna bring a team. That evening, Samantha and Lisa's been working with the team, we're getting that, uh, set up. So we're excited to, uh, to kind of share out, you know, what, what we've been doing, and what we have, you know, boots on the ground, as the next level of work there. Uh, and then also, if, uh, if, if, if it does work, I would like to do, as I mentioned, another walkthrough of. High schools, we can see, you know, the library's done, south gym floor is, is being poured. Uh, to get that completed, where the lockers, um, for the boys locker room are here and on site. Not sure of the exact install date, I'll get that information, so hopefully by ten seven, you know, most of these projects will be, will be done outside of those pool lockers, but. It's just the pool lockers, I'd like to get us around to see. Yeah, that's really, uh, that's it for, for now, thanks for some good discussion tonight.
Yeah, as Jeff mentioned, you know, we're, um, getting rolling on the, at some of the A I work, getting prepared to bring that, um, that information forward to, also. Yeah, as Jeff mentioned, you know, we're um getting rolling on the, at some of the AI work, getting prepared to bring that um, that information forward to, also working on um developing the data media, the data presentation that will also be that night, but we're going to really scale that back. I'll provide you all the information that I typically do in the slide deck ahead of time. But just in, for the sake of time, I'm really going to just focus on some of those key indicators that we've all been paying very close attention to. And then if there's anything else you want me to expand upon at a different date, we can do that, so just a heads up on that, that we're going to that will look a little different than it has in the past, just to maximize the amount of time that we have for the AI committee that evening. Um, so I'm in the midst of um compiling that data for you and you can expect that in the weekly update the Friday for the board meeting. Um. And then uh just, you know, we're, we are twelve days into the wit and wisdom implementation at the elementary school. It has been a very heavy lift for our elementary school teachers, so I just want to pub- publicly recognize all the time, energy, effort that they're putting into um, get it up off the ground and running, I know they're working very hard. Um, we did our, we are collecting weekly feedback from them and so we got a lot of good feedback. Uh, I'll be meeting with the elementary curriculum fellows tomorrow and talking about what are some things that we can do to help, you know, ease the lift for them, so um you know, it's been uh quite the busy start to the school year, um, and so we're doing everything we can to support that.
Annalise.
I have a. Um, just a quick update, um, I don't have the, obviously, Sep- September thirtieth, so um, you know, there was some uh talk, we had, uh, we have been residential special ed student, but um I think we will be um, okay to absorb that cost within um this budget year without hopefully having to implement a freeze, um, it is very early in the year though, so I'll uh continue monitoring that. Um, and then I am getting ready to start budget for twenty five, twenty six, I just looked and last year I sent it out on September thirtieth. So that's, we were just talking about that today, um, unfortunately, it doesn't look like I will be able to use uh Munis. So, or my old system, so um I can kind of use it to get some information, but not sure we're going to have the compar- you know, comparables, I'll see what I can do, but um I haven't heard back from the town as to uh whether or not they are able to close fiscal year twenty, uh, close twenty twenty four, so I'm not sure they can do that, um, I'm not going to be able to use the software for our budget prep, so um, I just want to warn you, so you may not get all the reports that uh you are typically used to or the budget book that um that I typically prepare.
Marianne, this might be some, Marianne, this might be something you can bring to the selectmen slash is that because it sounds like Munis is really good, like you're really happy with it, but one of the things I guess is in terms of our license is we can't have, is there a license or the?
Licensing issue, it's just in any general, you know, accounting software, you can't just have multiple fiscal years open, it just kind of, not, you know.
Yeah, so we're starting to move to looking to next year's budget. Because this, the year, the fiscal year is still open in the town. Marianne is not able to run all the reports that she would normally run that we utilize to make decisions. So if there's anything to expedite, the town being able to close twenty three, twenty four, and what is it?
Twenty uh yeah, twenty three, twenty.
Yeah, twenty, if they can click that with, be able, otherwise, Marianne and her team are going to have to do a lot of manual reporting, because because the old, she can't use the old system and can't use the new system, so it's Excel, I guess it's Excel.
It's Excel, I'll be able to import, um, you know, I'll have to import instead of having the, the different uh schools, I had hoped to have them enter the budget in all the detail, everything would be in there, so I won't be able to do that. Um, but it is just um not really, Excel is not conducive. It, it's just much easier, obviously, you import all the information into, that's why we have a software package and then generate the various reports.
We discussed this with the town finance.
Oh, no, they're aware of it, yeah, because they can't either, I, we're, we're in a joint, we're on a joint system, so it's not like it's just me. We're on a joint system, but I just feel I need to make sure our board here knows why I'm not going to have the same level of reporting that I would typically have.
Our budget workshops could look a little different too, if we can't, we might not have numbers as quick as we always have in the past, usually, once by that first meeting in November, you know, we have a rough increase uh for the following fiscal year, um. I don't think we would have, I don't want to speak about that, but I don't know if we'll have that.
And we start a little earlier than the town, so that's one of the other challenges, that, that it's the timing of, we're starting to look at things versus.
We'll probably start about the same time, but they won't start reporting to the board probably until mid-November, first go around. We can start, start getting our headaches early.
Yeah, 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 just in time for the holidays. Okay, any questions from our? Okay, now we're on nine D, uh, as part of administrative reports, we had moved, uh, the selectmen's representative section to that and we'll turn it over to Ms. Sorry.
So the reason I asked for the change for this evening, I looked around and I noticed the audience that we had and I thought that most of my comments tonight were more relative to the board and a whole site for, to the board, as to some of the things that are going on that I think have some implications for the board and decisions. So, uh, as you know, there's been quite a bit of controversy about the spare rent housing commission. Uh, this is the first time that we've created a commission where there have been a lot of state requirements. And we were really caught unaware that it was going to be this complicated. First of all, we didn't even know that we could have a fair rent commission because it was a cutoff for population and nobody had ever said anything that, well, even though you're below the cutoff, you still should have something. So uh this came upon us just about the same time as we began to see certain landlords putting in exorbitant rat rents, which I think uh in terms of perhaps your mortgage payment or something, if you found out a month before that your rent was, or your mortgage was going up by as much as nine hundred or a thousand dollars. So we were under a strict timeline because we needed to try to help our residents, but if we didn't work rapidly, then of course, anything that happened before we passed the legislation, we couldn't help those people. So we've been subject to a quite a bit of con- uh controversy about applications to that commission and um why it happened so rapidly. But as a matter of fact, we had more applicants than we had slots. And I think that people are under the uh misconception that this is about seeing, just about senior citizens more affordable. It is not. Uh, it could very well affect our student population as well because it is not limited just those, it's any rents, any rental units. So um.
But not commercial, I assume.
Uh, right, uh, or, well, no, not commercial businesses.
Not commercial business, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So um by restriction, uh, we had, the size of the commission was regulated, we had to appoint two landlords, we had to have two attorneys with certain number had to be tenants. Um, there had to, we had to meet a political balance of including unaffiliateds. And I bring this to your attention because when you're doing, when you're appointing subcommittees and commissions now, the state is becoming very, shall I say, bearing and setting up criteria about what we all can do uh as boards and commissions. And of course, as I said, this um this represents the overarching of the, the whole town. And um we know, we, we, we have people there at the meeting in tears. They just don't know, it was, it was really heartbreaking. Um, so the point is, they, there's no place for them to go. As we talk about board of finance cuts, we cut the amount of funding for um assistance assistance for um these types of um, uh, this population and um you say to yourself, well, where do you go from here? Uh, they cut the funding that we contribute to the New London uh, um, the New London program, we make, uh, but we do not, we contribute to them because we do not have our own. So um, I think, and in some cases, uh I think that um we, we might be seeing some students that feel affected by this uh because of grandparents. Maybe so, just want to put it on your, your screen. Um um, I uh informed the board about the A one in um presentation last time, and I think that they're going to reach out and see if we can get ones uh that same person or a recommendation for someone within that department to come in and address the uh the board of selectmen and any other commissions that might be affected. The FOI, rumors, I saw that a couple of board members were there, that is up online now in totality. Um, and of course, you've already heard tonight about the uh, the school, um, building committee. So now some of the ongoing projects. The project known as the Tricus project, which would be at Dodge Pond, which at one point was very massive, including a health facility on site. But that was not to be age restricted. That has come to kind of a stall. So we don't know what's going to happen to that. Um, but again, need to watch it pretty carefully because that was not age restricted. Um, the, the court case for the development behind Trytown that, we're not getting much information on that, um, they're not backing away, but talking about some revised plans. I don't see that as having a major impact because they could not have up there with the uh applications that they've already turned in, there's no way that there could be a development size of their original proposal. So I don't see much of an impact there. Um, after seven years of litigation, the Twin Valley subdivision is springing again. That is located between Green Valley Lakes and um, well, it's the Green Valley Lakes area. And that area is serviced by that development is divided between Flanders School and Haynes. So um if that goes through, um they, they have talked about um possibly beginning in the spring. Um, this is still in court. The Savior Forest being contested by the neighbors because of wetlands and the impact on the formal river. And um, they have been, they have been given, the uh developer has been given a ninety day extension on that. The short-term rental committee. Uh, that is still ongoing, they're still uh on discussions, but the big question is, what is a short-term rental? And that actually falls within a legal, a legal decision. Is it the number of days that you're there, is it measured, how is it measured, is it three months, six months, is it a number of days? But um, this again could have some implications. Uh, in earlier times, it was very customary, uh, because most of our beach communities were not winterized. And the majority of that population came from Hartford. So they would come down for the summer, but then go back to Hartford and take their children back with them to whatever school system. So um this, uh, this created an opportunity for junior rentals with, with a pretty much set by the landlords, but pretty much a school year rental. So for our new teachers coming in, for a housing to get a start, be able to live in town. They could find a more permanent place. Um, and also brought in families for the school year. And then it was very common, the children were here for the school year and then they would go in the summertime, they'd go visit grandpa or someplace and that was how it was managed, and that was a pretty good uh part of our population, including into high school. So it's going to be interesting to see what happens with this committee and um I think um they're, they're still pretty much feeling their way. But in particular, I think um if, if it is determined that a uh a short-term rental can be up to eight months, nine months, then that goes right back to our old days, and that did have major impact on school populations, uh, but it also gave us an opportunity to attract new teachers. So um the one hundred and thir- uh, one thirty-eight Boston Post Road development, which is the one nearby the cemetery, by Flanders Cemetery. Uh, there, I don't know if we've seen any impact on some of those, some of those uh units being occupied with children. There are several that are sold, but they're nowhere near a capacity of what has been built so far, still available rents there and there's still uh more property that can be developed there. So that's my overview and that's why I asked to come at the end, because I thought that this was more appropriate for the whole board discussion as opposed to for a number of other people having to sit out there and wait, which really didn't interest us.
I'm sorry, any questions for?
Thank you, Ms. Anne.
I have one question, comment, which you probably can't answer from here. So with all the construction of one sixty one, it's, gets pretty backed up and stuff, is there any way they could um put some cameras up? Like some high cameras, which I've seen in other places where residents can quickly go on our phone or computer and see what the traffic is, because I, I, I was going from here to all the way down one sixty one down to the water, like a half hour.
Mm-hmm.
And had I looked at it, I would have just gone back roads and not bothered with, with all that, I don't, it's part of the, it's cheap.
Just go the back roads anyway.
Well, it's from here to get there, it's a long way around, there's no easy way.
Uh, when this project was first discussed, there were, there was supposed to be um you had your, your car GPS system, those alerts were supposed to be coming in on the, the GPS. Um, but I don't think they are anymore.
Yeah.
So um, let me ask.
Cameras are cheap, I mean, they just put them up on the poles and they just stick them up there and you could just fish eye.
I know that there are some already.
Okay.
Uh, if you're coming from the old Sabre area. And, and coming, there are some there, so it's, it's definitely possible.
Yeah.
Let me, let me ask.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was just looking, doesn't look like, I thought they had a, like a, okay, cameras.
They should.
Yeah, where you could be, because I know they, they have them around, we've seen some of the meetings, I've seen they've gone live to them. Um, I don't know if these are live, like here's some here. But I don't know if these are, oh, live. So maybe you can't, if I don't.
Anyway, if they do and I missed it, then um I'll have to look for it, anyway, thanks, Ms. Ari.
You mentioned that is the, that is the only place that I've seen it, when you're, by seventy one, seventy two.
Yeah, yeah.
They're coming in that way.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, um, moving on to committee reports, we had policy this morning, or just, well, that's not, uh, Lisa.
Well, a policy met just before this meeting. Um, viewed um, a few remaining policies and new, and as well as new. Um to align, that have been aligned with legislation, they'll be coming to the board for a first read on October seventh.
Right.
So, then it's for.
Thanks for Lisa. Hey, and then I did have a learn meeting last week, um to main and updates first was um, they, the superintendent gave an update on each of the schools, so there's four schools that they really lead, uh, it's Lead, uh, it's the Friendship School or R M M S. There's a. Ames River. School. Right. That's more right, right next to, right next to the college, and then the Marine Science School, so it was just very interesting to hear how each of them. They sound like they're all doing very well. The um. The demand for the schools seems very high as well, and they offer. A good variety of possible educations for different students, so I, I, it seemed. It's good to learn, I guess, and just hear more about that, and then we did have a discussion, a brief discussion on AI. And um. You know, I think for my general feeling was for those, those who were there, um, so not everyone, not all the towns were represented, represented, but. Um, I think we're. I know we're still just at the beginning, but I think we're even a few steps maybe ahead of the others who were there, so. Um, for whatever that's worth, I do feel like, or at least at the forefront in. Some part of Connecticut of, of people who were like thinking about this and, and learning about it, so. I did ask that, see if Learn can start thinking about if they can maybe have someone become a little bit of a subject matter expert to then. Teach all the Learn, get all the districts within Learn. And be a sounding board and advance, ask questions, and they may do that, so they're thinking about that as well. Uh, no update on Abe, although if. Yes, if you're interested in the November. Fifteen, sixteen, uh, the, the Cape. Uh, just a mission. Convention, please make sure you like Carissa, now I think you're still, I think we're still within the window of. Discounted. Um. Interest fee or whatever it is. So if you are, please reach out to Carissa. Closes committee reports, and we're on to board comments.
Wait to make a comment about the. Putting that was here earlier, and I, I, you know, this is something we have been doing for the past year, at least since, since I've been on the board, and I, I think this is. You know, you need to continue this, you need to kind of get diverse group of students coming here. Uh, and, and, and the board recognizing them. I think it will fit into our board's goal of, of building student respect in the sense emphasis, because. I think one of the things that we had identified was that students don't respect each other, or they don't feel respected by, by the peers. By recognizing students and making, making them aware that, or you know, that, that. That the board is actually recognizing people with different skills and different talents, I think. It's not going to happen overnight, but over time, people will start respecting, and students will start respecting that, oh, just because. A, a student is only good in art, or a student is only good in math, doesn't, doesn't, doesn't make them, you know, um, you know, inferior in any way, so that respect will build over time, so. I just wanted to, you know, say that I think, um, you know, we are doing this, maybe if we can follow it up by, you know. By posting on ELPS that the board commented the student, um, it will. You know, it'll be, maybe it'll uh, lead to wider recognition, so something for something, but I, I really appreciate, you know, uh. You know. The admin, you know, administration doing this, and, 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 and again, we have been doing this, we should do more of this, so, you know, thank you.
Thanks, I completely agree, and um. We do post, we, that's why we take a picture so we can get it up on social media, we just need more people to follow our social media to, to get it out there, we're, we're working on that.
Yeah.
Uh, we are.
Well, I think it's a process, right, means if, 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 if we, if we recognize diverse students, a diverse group of people will follow.
Yes.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Good point.
Other comments?
I'm looking at what we're doing with our crowdsourcing for the composting project. I was able to click on, and it said the maximum I was allowed to donate was a hundred dollars, so. I was happy to do that, but it didn't look like we were necessarily. Getting there as quickly, I, I really want this project to get off the ground, no pun intended. But um, and I would encourage all of my colleagues on the board to donate as well, it's just such an important thing, I think, so.
Yeah, it's, I think it last I checked, it was around seventeen hundred. Eight hundred, somewhere in there, um.
Don't we need?
It's seventy five hundred.
So.
Yeah, so we're continuing to kind of push it out there. Um, different avenues, you just gotta keep kinda.
Right, right, maybe I can have a sticker or something. Since I won't have a trash can.
We got some, you know, some larger events coming up too, maybe, you know, a table and uh, some information sharing QR code.
Oh, that's good.
So, maybe, you know, we can talk. And nurse's screen. About that as well.
Bill, and then. I just wanted to say, um. You know, I finally talked to my daughter after a month, her first month at college, and her report was. That she felt prepared for her classes, and she was emailing her instructors that she, you know. Felt that way, and you know. So I, and, and I, I, my wife shared a picture with um. Liza had, you know, I guess you can reserve a room in the library with these whiteboards, they had study groups and all this stuff, and she's leading the study group, and she's like. So anyway, um, I say kudos to uh, high school and all the teachers, because obviously it's a, from the bottom all the way up, but um. But yeah, I, I feel really good, so I, I think that both of my kids felt as though they were um. Certainly well-prepared for where they ended up.
Right.
Good job.
That's great.
It's good.
Glad to hear that she's adjusting well. I can ditto that comment on both, actually, one just that went off, and then the one that is. Graduated from college, but both have the same. My daughter did too.
My, my three kids as well, yes.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Father minded as well.
Yeah.
Our kids are ready to go.
Yeah.
Students. Won't be waiting for you.
I just wanted to follow, follow up on Kate's thing, you know, yeah, because I think we, we have, uh. Trying to get more, more people to donate for that, um, now, so that thing is, is, is important. I've, I've tried to get my circle to, to donate, you know, and, and. I wonder if it will be a good idea to move the um. Yeah, this, the high school community, because some, some kids, they'd be able to spare five dollars, you know, so if hundred kids, you know, put together five dollars each, at that, that would be a substantial amount. You know, can't insist on it, but it's, it's a question, can we, can we do that, you know?
Yeah, or even use maybe Senate to do like a car wash or some sort of.
Yes.
So. Yep, let me uh, let me mention to uh, to, to Mrs. Kelly and nurse's screen.
We get a few hundred thousand people probably watching this video, so if we could explore.
That was my other report item, too, I forgot, we were here today, we decided we need to repaint this wall, this backpacks, or. Yeah, the whole, yeah, so they're gonna repaint it, and then we marked out where we're gonna put the mission statement earlier today, so.
Nice.
It, it works, and the student art club is gonna do it.
I had two elements, one is we had a gentleman come in to talk about middle school sports in the spring, and that we all like, so. It would be good to get an update.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Be good to understand that.
We've gotten that far spring yet.
Yeah, I know.
Uh, but what we could look into and see what we've got planned.
Yeah, and then. Um. Um. Person mentioned Gary White, and we've talked several times, like, I don't know if anybody has seen, because I, when I, they opened the grand greenhouse, I did and saw. All the work that he does gardening, uh, is pretty phenomenal, so I don't know if there is. Anything we've done to recognize him, but in terms of recognition and. Cause he spends, I think he's there all summer. Taking care of it and the greenhouse, and his kids, the, the students were so excited, his class was so excited, um, and doing it, so. I don't know if there's something, or a gear or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Sure. I did try to get him out there for a picture, so I could do a social media spotlight, but I can't get him to commit. I don't know if he's camera shy, he told me to get back to me, I haven't heard from him, so. Um.
Wait for the cross season, and then just pull him off the field.
So um, but yeah, yeah, he's. Lot of time and. Dedication on its own to make that happen.
Oh, and. While you're thinking of recognition too, I'm sorry.
No.
No, um. We brought up the idea of. The career on pathways, having like a plaque or a uniform, did that ever get to Dave, and is that, does that make any traction?
It was supposed to happen tonight, but we couldn't have the plaques ready, so ten.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we just couldn't get them made, Nate's making up in the uh, um, we're here, which out, they're making the plaques up, so we're gonna present those on ten seven, we've got Furman's Garage coming, and um, the boat uh. A tackle shot down. Okay, shot down, yeah, so those two are.
Great, that's cool.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So.
Nice job.
Yeah. Excited for that, yeah, they're excited too to come. So, yeah, so Dave will have that, uh, I know, we just got held up with it.
Here on ocean.
I'd like to make a motion that we join our reading, so that's fine, it's worth having.
All those in favor, I, I oppose, I'm saying, thanks everyone, I am gonna take a walk down, if anybody wants to. Walk in. Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna walk around, if anybody is interested, I'm gonna.